Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And with that, we will move on to item number three, which is public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to item number four. Approved minutes of the April 3, 2018, regular meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Len, second by Emery. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero. Item number five, approved minutes from the April 7, 2018, ordinance committee meeting. Can I have a motion to do so?
Second.
Motion by Len, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero. Item number six, first selectmen's report. If I can refer everyone to the long-term capital plan? Okay, I handed that out to you tonight.
Got it.
Just as I was walking by. Okay. So what I'd like to do is, under first selectmen's report, give the capital plan to you tonight. Give you the opportunity to review it, and the plan will be to actively discuss it and vote on it at our next meeting. I want you to take a look at the projected seventeen eighteen number, as well as the forecasted eighteen nineteen number. As you know, we have not voted on any capital for this current budget year. We've been holding off to see how our budget would shake out. But at our next meeting, I would like to move forward with both seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen. You'll notice in yellow highlighted, auxiliary building for Public Works. That $50,000 is still sitting there. That's when we were looking at adding some additional space for Public Works. So that money is currently encumbered. Again, we have $300,000 available each year. We're to the point now where we pay cash for this, we no longer borrow it. In fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we have $325,347 listed for the plan. So we're gonna have to make some decisions and determinations on that. Anybody have any initial questions, just at a quick glance? No? Okay, so we'll talk in more detail at our next meeting, and then we'll actually vote on it. Money has been approved, obviously, in seventeen eighteen, that's part of the budget. And then for eighteen nineteen, the $300,000 has been moved forward by the Board of Finance. Okay. With that, we'll close the first selectmen's report. And we'll move to item number seven, discussion to take possible action regarding Country Club Road sewer extension. As you recall, we got a letter from the residents on Country Club about the potential of adding sewer to their street. The board moved that on to the WPCA. Jim Gallagher, we all know, is the engineer for the WPCA, so Jim is going to give us an update and a report. Jim, if you could take the mic. Well, just so they pick you up on the camera.
Kurt just says I want to yell the vice-parents.
Yes, because they will. And Jim's got on nice shoes today, if anybody noticed?
They match.
They look the exact same as mine.
Do you all have my handout, or should I give them to you?
If you can give the handout.
Yeah, sure. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The residents, none that live in that area, no?
Yeah.
Good evening. As Kurt had mentioned, there was a petition to the Board of Selectmen for extension of water and sanitary sewer service to the Country Club Lane, Fairview Lane area. Right now, the sanitary sewer extends up Botched Road and it ends at Sherry Drive. I think I remember that, I put it there. It ends at Sherry Drive. The water service actually extends a little bit beyond that. It goes up to the firehouse, so that it can be used by the fire department. What I did was I put together an estimate for extending the sewers into this whole, the whole area. Right now, what the way the ground, the way the terrain is, this section of the road actually pitches downward towards the existing sewer system. However, this is actually kind of a high point. And now the grade goes down. It fluctuates a little bit through this area, but basically, this area here is lower than the intersection of Botched Road and Country Club Drive. And the same, and Fairway Lane is actually even lower than that. So in order to provide sanitary service for this, what we would have to do is provide what they call a low-pressure sewer system, which is a small two-inch force main, indicated here in the purple. A two-inch force main in the green. And in service to each individual house. Each house would be fitted with a grinder pump. The grinder pump system would pump into the street, and then this force main would bring the sewer up to Botched Road, which would run by gravity down to the sewer at the intersection of Sherry Drive. If you can, if you look at the second page there, you can see that the cost for these people is gonna be in the order of magnitude of about $30,000 per household as an assessment. That assessment includes our estimate of around $5,000 for the actual grinder pump itself. That's a, I say that that way because that's kind of a decision the town needs to make, whether they're gonna include that, the grinder, individual grinder pumps, in the cost, or let the cost go to the individual homeowner, or let the individual homeowner connect when they want to. There's a couple of options there. But in order of magnitude, you know, I think it's reasonable to say that to extend sewer to these homes, it's gonna cost around $30,000 per house. Okay? And then I also did an estimate for the work for the water, to bring water up. I know that the fire department is very interested in extending water in that area because, you know, it's best for fire protection. There's probably about another $10,000 per house in extending the water to that neighborhood. Now, there are a couple of potential, I use the word potential, options that are available as far as the water is concerned. If more than 50% of the homeowners in the neighborhood have documented contamination problems of the wells, there's potential that you could go to the water company and get some assistance. And I use the word potential and some assistance, so I remind everybody of those two words, those two phrases. Because there is, there's a potential that they could come and actually either help with the cost or carry the cost, depending on what the contamination is of the wells. But it has to be documented contamination. It has to be test results from a laboratory. It can't be, I don't have enough water, it doesn't taste right, of those types of things. So moving forward, if the town was to move forward, that would be something to be worth investigating to see if, to see what the results of the well tests are. But that's kind of the cost breakdown. We, you know, use our standard procedure for estimating the cost. When the job is done, there's gonna be an overlay, which is the town standard for construction. One of the things that I would do is I would petition the water company to put in their laterals. They don't typically put in all of their laterals, unless people hooking up, because that, in their accounting system, they don't establish an account number until they put the lateral in. And they only put the lateral in when somebody wants the service. So I would petition them to put in the laterals, so that you have your sewer in the road, your sewer laterals, have your wannabe in the road, your water laterals, and then we'll come in and do final paving of the road, and then there's no more excavation of the road by, you know, to, you know, because you got a whole new road system.
Is the overlay, does the overlay curb to curb?
Yes, yes. The way it's estimated is that the final overlay would be curb to curb, and new curbs where curbs are needed, new aprons where aprons are needed.
And that's on Country Club and Fairview?
That's right, Country Club and Fairview. And there's also a section here of Botched that is, that are, there are five houses along Botched that benefit also from the petition. So that section of Botched would also receive water, because it needs it to extend to the neighborhood. It would also receive sewer, because it needs it to extend to the neighborhood, and it would be included in the assessment.
Okay.
So when you talk about the contamination, I just want to make sure we have that part clear. It's, you need more than one test to show that there's contamination, correct?
That's correct, yeah. There has to be a series of tests showing that there's a, that there's a, let's say the septic systems are impacting the well quality, water quality. There has to be a series of tests, yeah.
And from a certified lab?
That's right, yes, has to. And it's best if it's documented, you know, each individual one. This is, this, in order to get the water company to potentially assist the town in the cost, a well-documented file of each individual well, the number of tests, the contamination included, those types of things that need to be provided.
What's the project length, start to finish, I mean ballpark?
You know, it'd be one season. Be one construction season.
What's the cost to assess the contamination, and who's it borne by?
Well, if there is contamination in the wells, I would suspect that people who are having that problem have already had the wells tested. The well tests are a couple hundred dollars apiece, you know, and they would have to do, you would have a couple of successions. So you're talking, you know, five, $600 per home.
Okay. Couple other questions. With regard to the sewer line, you know, you're extending it from Sherry up, and you said you have to have grinder pumps, and you have to pump it up the hill, and then it feeds into the gravity system, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
If there are other streets that eventually want to hook in, will that be able to handle that kind of additional volume? Or is this specifically tailored just for this neighborhood?
Well, there'll be a gravity sewer in Botched. So any additional homes in the future, you know, where, what's the name of the subdivision across the way? I forget.
Jello Farms?
Thank you, Jello Farms. They would connect right into the, into the gravity line, so there's plenty of capacity for that. This little low section here, there is no more, you know, subdivision development down below, so they would need to connect to that. So the people who would be able to connect by gravity would be able to connect to the system that has plenty of capacity.
So anything on the other side of this, the other side of Great Hill? I would imagine, I mean, is it even possible if we ever wanted to put sewers over there?
You'd have to, you'd have to, you'd have to put in a pump station at that point. You know, that was one of the options that I looked into here. But if you look at the cost that I presented tonight, it's a little over a million dollars. For all intents and purposes, if I put a standard pump station in this, in this area down here, which is the low point, almost all the, the same costs are present. So that would just add a half a million dollars to the, to the cost of the project, and you really don't get any real benefit out of it.
And second question with regard to this, probably more for you, Kurt, than for Jim. If they're gonna overlay the street, if they, you know, if we move forward the project, how is that gonna impact our roads program? Is that gonna potentially take a street off of our list?
Well, one of the things that we had already planned was that section of Botched. So from, essentially, the four-way stop up to Great Hill is in the plan.
From here, through the.
For this year. Right. Country Club and Fairway were not in the plan, so this would be an improvement to that. But again, it's an overlay, so without looking at the road, I don't know if it's, you know, if it needs something more than an overlay. That road's gotta be, what, 25 years old now?
Yeah, at least, yeah.
Jim, just a question on the systems that these folks have. I mean, answer the best you can, but with their age, they're starting to talk about needing to replace them. These systems are starting to go. What's a system cost?
Well, these, these homes all have engineered septic systems. So they're easily $15,000 to $20,000 to $25,000 to replace an engineered septic system.
Okay.
You know, a great, a great way to check is this lot right here is being built on right now. And, you know, we could find out what his, what his septic system cost is. You know, we could reach out to them and find out, you know, what their estimate was. It'd give you a good idea what that cost is.
Is there any way to protect that lot, I guess, for lack of a better term? Where I get, some of these people have been there for 25 years, but if this is a brand-new lot that just spent 25 grand to put in an engineered septic system, now they could get hit with $47,000?
Right.
An assessment, is there a way to protect them, or?
Well, I, the short of it is no, unfortunately, the short of it is no. This, this exact occurrence happens on almost every sewer expansion job I've ever done, because somewheres along the line, somebody is, in some area, regardless of where it is, has had a septic problem, fixed it, and then others had problems. And then we came in and replaced all the sewers, and then the people say, well, I just fixed my sewer for the septic system five years ago, and now I'm gonna get hit. It happens every single time.
Okay. Rich, just a question on mechanics. While this report is good, I mean, for the selectmen to see, based on the way the charter's written, we really have no saying that's correct. This would go back to the WPCA, because they would be the ones assuming the debt? Okay.
No, we haven't.
That's first one, done. Yeah.
Correct.
But I guess my question, because it's not a part of our debt service, technically. The cost of the debt will come from the WPCA. Right. Okay. All right, any more questions or comments for Jim? So Jim, has this been presented yet to the WPCA?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I presented it at their last meeting, and they directed me to come and make a presentation to you, to keep you abreast of the position of where it's at. They have made no decision, but did direct me to come and present to you.
Did they have, were they talking about scheduling any type of public hearing or public session with the folks in this area to let them know what was going on, or no?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
I would think that's wise, because some of the residents said they'd like to know the cost.
Oh, yeah. Well, I would, I would think, just in conversations with the group that I spoke with, I don't think they're gonna have an issue with the sewer assessment, because it's probably in line with what they would spend. I think the question may come in on the $17,000 for the water. So, okay. And then, you know, these obviously are estimates.
That's correct, yeah.
So assuming that the WPCA has the conversation with the residents, everyone wants to move forward, you'd obviously button these up, and then everything would have to go out to bed?
Yes, the next step from a, from a construction standpoint, so to speak, would be to go out and do the final design. This is a tabletop analysis that you have in front of you. So we go out there and do the physical survey, and come up with final layout.
Okay. And what do you think the timeline for that is?
That could be a month to six weeks.
Okay.
What potentially could increase your estimate as to the cost? In other words, in construction, what might you run into that could increase the cost to the homeowners?
There's basically two things that are, that are always construction unknowns, for lack of a better term. One is contamination, if there's some type of contamination. Hard to imagine, you know, that was, you know, an open-field golf course for a long time. And rock, those are the two biggest things.
And my other question, and I guess maybe this is for you or for us. What if of the families that are listed here, what if 50% of them decide they're not interested in this?
I think we would, this group would have to, or the WPCA, would have to determine a number, a percentage, to move forward with the project.
Because we certainly don't have the authority to force them to participate in this.
If we put it in, the assessment just goes on the house. And if they don't pay it, it's a lien, correct?
Yes, typically what happens is, once this is done, you go to construction. You find out your final construction cost. You have an assessment hearing. You establish the assessment there. The assessment goes on to each individual lot. And then whether, whether the people connect or not is a choice that they make. However, the assessment still rides with the parcel.
Right, and then, you're right, lien goes on to the property, so it's, it's.
That's correct.
And they pay it over, it's probably a 20-year note.
That's correct, yeah.
And one other question. When, when the homeowner decides to hook up to this service,
Yes.
the landscaping on their property becomes their responsibility, I'm assuming?
That's correct.
Right, and they have to understand that they are responsible until the road. So the lateral that goes, yeah, lateral that goes from their house to the curb, if something goes wrong with it, roots, trees, it breaks, they are financially responsible for, and anything from the road is the town, is the WPCA.
I'm gonna assume with the new law that this can probably be a 30-year note, I would guess. What would, what's the?
The last.
Likely life expectancy of a system like this?
Oh, it's over 50 years.
Yeah, so I would expect we can probably run it out to 30 years on the notes.
The last one I did was a 30-year note.
Yeah. So.
And Rich, if I may, am I mistaken in understanding that the town has an easement on the first several feet of property next to the road? Like where there's a telephone pole?
You want me to jump on that one? Sure. Yeah, there's, there's always a misunderstanding between, what people understand about being the town road and the town right-of-way. The town road is in the middle of the town right-of-way. The road might be 30 feet wide. Typically, a right-of-way, the town's owned property in this area is about 50 feet wide. So it's about 10 feet behind the curb, it's still the town's property.
Thank you.
But would that apply, say something went wrong?
In the 10 feet.
In that 10 feet?
Yeah, the, like, for instance, with the sewers, in the sewer, in the case of the sewers, the sewer lateral will be extended to the town right-of-way line. It'll be extended 10 feet past the curb.
Versus a tree outside the right-of-way, that, you know, on the private property, that's the homeowner.
Yeah, but I think, if, the reason why Kieran was asking, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that if the ladder, if something would happen to the lateral within that 10 feet, the landowner in the right-of-way, it's, it's still gonna be the homeowner's responsibility. It's not gonna be the town's responsibility, correct?
No, typically, the town's responsible for the lateral from the sanitary sewer to the right-of-way line. That's the way it is for the rest of the sewers in town.
On the right-of-way.
Yeah. And the road isn't always in the middle, either.
Right.
Rarely in the middle.
I just think considering the cost, it is important to figure out what percentage of the neighborhood you need buy-in before anything's proceeded.
Yeah. I think right now, with the, just from a petition standpoint, we had a petition from about 18 people. My memory says we're at 34. Thank you, 34 people. So about half, you know, signed up in your petition. Typically, what happens in this situation is there are some people that were on the petition that bark and say, we're out. And then there are other people that have a problem that never got on to the petition that said, count me in. So I think, you know, it's, the protocol would be to have the, you know, either out of the yard direction or the WPCA direction, be, reach out to each individual homeowner and see if we can get any response.
We'd want to include the cost for the water and just the overall.
Sure, oh, yeah. Yeah, might as well give them the whole picture, because if not, then they're only gonna come back later saying, we didn't understand.
Right.
And that was my concern at the last meeting, was that this petition was signed by people who loved the idea, but had no idea what it was gonna cost.
Sure.
So then I think it'd be a good idea to get ahold of Jonathan, the WPCA, and John Marosi, who's the chair, and have it posted, so that they can go to the next.
WPCA meeting.
WPCA meeting, which is held here. The first Monday.
Yep.
Of every month. So that if they have any questions, they can come here, and it can be discussed, and it can be put on the agenda.
Yep.
And let everybody know.
Good.
All right, so Rich, if you could, I guess dig into this a little bit, and determine for our next meeting in two weeks? Yeah. Who makes the decision, you know, who's authority is, that type of stuff? So that way, the board can make a decision. Are we deciding, does it go to WPCA? I believe it goes to WPCA. But what that process would be? And then we can set up, once we hear that, then we set up a public. Correct. Correct.
I would say it's, it's, it will qualify, but highly doubtful if it would be eligible.
Okay. All right, so any other comments, thoughts, questions?
Yeah, with regard to the bonding issue, is this something that we've anticipated at all? I mean, how would this impact other things that we want to bond for in the future, if we were to undertake this project?
Well, it shouldn't be any money that's paid for by the towns or the municipal budgets. The payments of principal and interest should be coming from the WPCA. But we would essentially underwrite the bond, is what we would be doing. How S&amp;P would look at that, I don't know. We'd have, that's a question for Bond Counsel and for our financial advisors, but we can reach out to them and see. You know, one of the questions S&amp;P asked specifically in December was, you know, do we have any intentions for coming back for any type of debt issue in the next two years or so? And we had said no. So how they would look at this, I don't know. I would expect they would, yeah.
However we handle this, any other properties that come forward later, they might be interested in the same thing. We want to be fair, so make sure that we're handling it in a manner that we would still agree to do it for future projects if needed.
In what way?
If there's other neighborhoods that come forward with a similar issue and want to tie into the lines. We don't want to say yes and fund in one manner, and then for some arbitrary reason, refuse another neighborhood in a similar.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
As long as that neighborhood could hook up, I'm all right.
Right.
Because anything, on the other side of Great Hill Road, down to 34.
Yeah, that's, that's, that would really be a whole different system.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Does that give you enough time, Rich, for our next meeting? So, Rich, can you make a note to, just add it to our next meeting? Okay, item number eight, discussion to take possible action regarding Founder's Day requests, or request, excuse me. In your packet, you have a letter, which I will read into the record. It says, Dear First Selectmen and Board of Selectmen, Seymour will be experiencing its ninth annual Founder's Day on June 3, 2018. Bless you. The reigning date of June 10, 2018. In celebration of its history and heritage, the event will the event will be held from ten AM to four PM, and will encompass the entire downtown area, Main Street from Trestle Tavern to the Strand Theater, including Bank First, Columbus, and part of the Forest Streets. They will be closed to vehicles and open to only pedestrian traffic, the street will be filled with vendors, amusements, and other forms of entertainment. We are anticipating the festival will attract not only local residents, but many visitors from other areas, therefore, is our hope that you will provide us the use of your parking lots on the above dates, we are asking permission to use the following parking lots, Community Center, Strand Theater, Metro North, and the Town Hall Lot. Seymour Founder's Day Association wishes to thank you in advance for the help and support. Please check one of the following boxes, sign and return to Judas Sim, I'm not gonna read her address, so it's just, yes, I will grant permission for use of the parking lots, no, unable to grant permission for the use of the parking lots. Okay, so this is the same letter that we get, so we've gotten eight other times, I believe. But I don't, Mr. Bell Vance, if you wanna just jump in, and as the president.
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Okay, um, the letter came from Judy, which really doesn't have anything to do with me coming tonight, they just kinda coincide. I'm here, obviously, you know, the event is scheduled for June third, with a rain date the following, uh, Sunday, and it's from ten to four. Our benefactor this year, this is our ninth year, our benefactor this year is, again, the, um, Historical Society, they were our very first benefactor, um, and unfortunately, the first year, not knowing the ropes and, and just being our first year, um, we paid for the entire event, we didn't have sponsorships, we didn't apply for grants, we didn't do corporate, you know, we didn't do any of that, and it cost about twenty-three thousand dollars to take, you know, to do the whole thing. So the Historical Society, in fact, got very little money, um, so we're revisiting them again this year, they will be our benefactor for this year, um, and I would like to request from the board, as I have in previous years, if you would see it within your, um, scope of budget, to, uh, cover the, um, police coverage, which is in around two thousand dollars, um, I would request that, and I would also like, again, which I've done before, to request the use, only in the later afternoon, um, the senior bus, um, and that's just to take vendors from downtown, from Tony's Diner, and bring them over to their cars, to get their cars at the end of the day, to bring them back uptown, um, and Wes Nelson, who ride, drives for Lucy, has volunteered to do the bus, so he would handle all that, he's their regular bus driver, he said he would go get it, do it, lock it back up, and that would be good to go, but obviously, I'm, you know, have to go through you guys, and, um, that's about it, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, any questions? I'm gonna kinda go through this, just one thing at a time, so it was the bus, and what we?
Senior bus and the police coverage.
Yeah, the, the police, uh, I believe we have a line budgeted, or a line in the budget for Founder's Day, I believe we have twenty-five hundred, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
So that's already, that should already be taken care of, so there's nothing for, um, the board to do on that, so we'd be, again, talking about the, uh, the bus, and then also talking about, uh, the parking lots. Now, we got a letter today, um, to add to our agenda, from Citizens Engine Company, um, they would like to hold their carnival.
I just heard about that.
At the Community, Community Center from Thursday the thirty-first through Saturday, June second. Assuming that they will not have the rides off of Randall Field on Sunday morning, how does that impact you?
That's a, that is a, um, a problem, that is definitely a problem, because, uh, the vendors, obviously, they drop their goods off on Main Street, um, then they have to, you know, they drive their cars over to the Community Center, which isn't that far, and we have a bus, a school bus, that puts people on it and shoots them over to Tony's Diner and drops them off, so that they can get back to their, um, space to, um, load or unload. Some people do come alone, and they just put, the Boy Scouts help put their stuff on the sidewalk, and then they go park their car and they come back, that is, um, convenient, it's close, it's quick, the bus can just shoot right up and around, make a circle, it's very quick. If the equipment and the rides and/or paraphernalia is still on that field, uh, vendors start parking as early as six o'clock in the morning, um, that will be a problem, because if we had to go all the way up to Bungee School, say, for instance, that could, in fact, be a good half hour from the time you get up there, if you just miss the bus, and the bus has to go down the hill, drop off, and come back up, that really and truly would be a very big inconvenience for us. 'Cause I don't, I don't know if you can think of any, but I couldn't think of, the next closest big parking lot would be Bungee School, the library's not big enough, um, and Bungee, I think, is the closest to downtown, because we use Chatfield for the shuttle buses for visitors to come in, so we couldn't really take up a spot with, for the vendors, and a lot of these vendors come and they pull trailers, or they come in box trucks, or that kind of thing, so it's not like you can put them in a regular, not that you can't put them in a regular parking lot, but the Community Center works out really good for those big vehicles.
Right, what about, what about French Park? That's closer.
Yeah, but the parking's not.
Parking's, that's very small.
Yeah, the parking is not great there.
Yeah, and I was thinking Clarus Village or Stop and Shop, but those aren't town.
Yeah.
Well, we get a lot of, I mean, we get a lot of cars in the neighborhood for, um, you know, Pumpkin Festival. You know, maybe we could talk to Haynes and see if we can park cars behind Stop and Shop, they have that, um, facility back there, so I don't know, that's something we'll have to.
Never been back there, is that, is it a big area?
Yeah.
Is it a, like, the size of the Community Center field? Or close to it?
Yeah, I would say it's a fair size, with the skate park now taking spot.
Okay, do they use that property anymore, or are they completely vacated that?
No, they use the property, but I don't believe they're open on Sundays.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to take a ride and look, and.
Okay.
I may, I might be overestimating the spot, too.
Okay.
What about, what about the Haynes property upright off of Route Eight? Would they allow us to park there?
What do you mean, right off of Route Eight?
The, the new.
The ended Derby Avenue?
I think they're open on Sunday.
They're open on Sundays, yeah.
Is there an alternative way to get the, uh, the rides out of Randall Field?
Uh, I don't know.
Instead of through the parking lot? Move the fence or something, I don't know, is there a fence there, I don't even?
I think right where the cars park is where the rides are.
Well, why don't we see if we could talk to the fire department and see if they can talk to the amusement people and say, "We have to have the rides out of here by, you know, three AM in the morning," 'cause I'm sure the amusement center has another carnival, I mean, that's big carnival season time, so I'm sure they would have to get set up for the next one.
They'd probably use Sunday to break down and then move on to the next spot for Monday or Tuesday, I would assume.
If I remember last year, after the carnival, on Sunday, that field was full of stuff.
Yeah.
And people just slowly came along and, you know.
Yeah.
Got rid of their stuff, so that's gonna be a problem for us.
Can they get it out after Founder's Day is over?
Well, it's the parking is the issue.
Yeah, where the rides are is where the cars park.
I keep thinking the rides are on the field itself.
Yes, it is, and that's where the cars park, on the field.
Oh, they.
They come in from that back entrance, and then they just park on the, yeah, on the grass.
Rory, has the fire department approached you about the impact of the community garden on Randall Field? And having less space? Shouldn't affect them?
Why can't they move the carnival to French? Didn't they have the carnival at French last year?
No.
The carnival was at French.
What?
It was.
No, it was a, it was a community center last year.
It was a French park last year.
It was a French park last year.
Yeah, 'cause we had to fight about the alcohol.
There was a French park, the year before?
No, last year.
Community Center, two years ago.
I'm having a conversation with someone in the audience who won't stop talking. So, well, all right, well, at this point, and this is just my opinion, um.
Can we work on this and try to find a solution?
Uh, well, I'm for moving Founder's Day forward, and then having the, the fire, um, department work around Founder's Day, it shouldn't be the other way around.
No, agreed, I think we were just trying to problem solve it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but I mean, I don't think that should really be for us to have to come up with the solution, I think it should be for the firemen.
Yeah, fine.
To make their.
Yeah.
Um, their event work, particularly if they're gonna be bouncing back and forth between locations, um, so, that's just my opinion, so if anybody thinks differently.
No, I second you.
I agree.
So, okay, so then with that, we're gonna entertain a motion to accept, or to approve, I should say, the Seymour Founder's Day request for use of the parking lots, uh, at the Community Center, uh, and, and just the one caveat on the Community Center parking lot, that it's gotta be the back part and the field, it can't be the church.
Right, oh, we know.
And it can't be the little triangle part, and you're gonna need to have someone there.
Yes.
To police that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We usually get the Lions Club to do that in the morning.
Perfect, just 'cause the, you know, with, that's the only day they have service and.
Oh, I know.
I don't wanna get yelled at by.
I've lived it, yes.
So the Community Center, the Strand Theater lots, Metro North, and the Town Hall Lot, and to also allow the use of the community services bus as needed by the Founder's Day Committee, um, on that day.
So.
Motion by Karen, who was the second, Tricia or Amory? Amory?
Tricia.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, cheer outside, motion passes seven zero, and just, um, get with Rory over the next couple of days, and he'll, we'll tell you how much is in the, uh, the line on for the budget. I believe it's twenty-five hundred.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell.
Good night.
Okay, um, item number nine. It'll be that resident that won't stop talking, so now hopefully he's gonna do a lot of talking. Um, you know, at the request of seeing some different committees, um, we thought we'd bring the Safety Committee back, uh, 'cause they've done some, some different things, improved a lot of stuff over the last, uh, couple of months, so with that, we will call up our chairperson of the Safety Committee, Alex Danka. The letter I prepared for you, oh. Talking to the microphone now.
All right, last year, we'll start off, we have nineteen members on our Safety Board Committee now, just about a few from everybody from each of the town buildings. We had a meeting last month, and talking to the, um, the Workman's Comp Claim Person who came, Kevin, and the Insurance Person who came, Don, we're down almost eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from last year's claims. So far, year-to-date, we have sixty-two claims with the Board of Ed, um, and they have that in reserve for two hundred and sixteen thousand, and we have thirteen claims with the town at ninety thousand dollars. One of those were, they have it at eighty thousand, it was one of the police officers who got hurt making an arrest, but year-to-date, paid on that only is, I think it was like fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars so far, and as I learned more about it, is some of these numbers are high, because they have to put in reserve money to justify cost and more treatment, so the numbers are way down, he said, he was very impressed. We, we started a lot more, uh, training, uh, this year than we did last year, uh, we offered more CPR and bloodborne pathogens to just about everybody in the town, Public Works is doing a lot more training, I mean, town employees, not the town residents, town employees, um, Public Works has been doing a lot more training with the insurance guy from PMA, um, I know that the next class, that they're gonna try to do a chainsaw class from Stills, and come down and show them different operations and stuff like that, they did a driver defense one, I believe, um, Tim's handling the Public Works part of it with the training.
That's Tim Wallace.
Tim Wallace, yes. We are gonna start, we're gonna be sending out a letter soon after our next meeting, just to finalize everything to all the department heads, we are gonna start, because there was six of us who went to the accident investigation class, and so when, starting when somebody gets hurt after, they're gonna see us, too, they're gonna come in front of us and explain to them how they got hurt, what happened, not to put blame on somebody, or say, "Hey, you did wrong of this," just to educate people and understand how they got hurt and what we could do to prevent it from happening again, um, like he said, there's like ninety-nine point nine percent of accidents at work are avoidable, but there's that one hundredth percent, you know, that just happens, you can't do nothing about it. We're just trying to get a lot more, um, training, 'cause I says, the, the guy from the insurance company says that by doing more training, being more upfront with things, doing, we're doing a lot more safety walks through, I'm gonna get OSHA at the end of this, uh, quarter to come in, his name is Jim, we have to wait a year until after we had our ocean inspection, he comes in, he does a walkthrough with a few of us, he cannot find us, he cannot write us up, it's a, it's a, um, it's a, um.
Preventative.
Preventative, yes, from OSHA, where it's good, because if we do get, trying to get audited again, and they saw that you're using this person, ninety-nine percent, this came right from the OSHA, but ninety-nine percent of the time you get, is you have somebody there already, and, you know, taking care of the problems, so, I mean, if we do have problems, we wanna fix the problems anyway.
Mm-huh.
We'll fix them without the fines, which is good. We're doing the, um, Tim is gonna be start asking, uh, employees in the town, Tim Wallace, for a copy of their driver's license, such as people who use town vehicles, they'll be keeping them down there to make sure that they're valid when they're driving a town vehicle, um, such as, like, you know, we had an incident with Kurt Miller, you know, we don't know, he was, he was, I'm not using him saying this happened, he was in California, he had DUI, he won't make it back here, we don't know, we won't hear about anything, it happened over there, just to make sure, I mean, Tim pulled my license, I gave him my license, we went on there, and they said, "Oh, I had like four."
Alex, I advise you not to speak.
Yes, yes, yes.
Not bad, no, he said, "I had four days left, I forgot all about it, to get my DOT physical," so the next day I had to go down and get it, so, but, stuff like that, sometimes you overlook stuff like that, I'm not driving, I'm not driving a CDL anymore, I mean, I'm not driving a big truck for the town.
Right, but.
But in a situation, I had to move the bus one day, or, you know, one day, you know, I could say, they could say, "Hey, listen, you need to get a, pick up a dump truck," and I could've been in that truck and not realizing my, it could've been downgraded, but that's stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
We're doing a lot more walkthroughs, and we're actually having people who are checking their fire extinguishers, each person has a building, has been assigned to check off all the fire extinguishers and stuff like that, or also, also doing a walkthrough, or S, or, some people call them MSD sheets, some call them SDS sheets. Amory has a couple of names for them, we could do.
They are safety data sheets.
Yes.
That is their name, their legal, I have many names for them, absolutely, but their legal name is SDS.
We're gonna be ordering, we decided we wanna do a hard copy and electronic copy, you know, because, um, we're looking into getting a program, we're gonna have to spend some money, but we're gonna have to get a program for it to help us out, 'cause there's just too much stuff in all the town buildings to, uh, maintain, um, what else did we do? Well, we're working with, we're gonna get school, school dude up, or safety, uh, someone's, it's, uh, someone sees a safety issue problem, they send out a, you know, a slipped work order, so it gets addressed, so there's a paper trail saying, "Hey, we fixed this problem, this problem was addressed and taken care of," so that's where we stand right now.
Wasn't the council something similar to that, or?
Yes, yeah, but we're, because we've brought, uh, operations together, the school uses a school dude, um, we're gonna use school dude now for everybody. Yeah, so we're gonna be able to track repairs and costs, things like that.
So that's where we're at, do you have any questions?
I think it's wonderful, I, I, I'm so happy to see that you've taken this from a little tiny pebble, and you've grown it into a huge mountain, I am very proud of you, and kudos to you and your whole team.
Team actually did it.
Um, it's nice to see that's nineteen members, it's great that you are doing a root cause analysis with not only the employees, but with their peers, so that they can see, and it's a new set of eyes and new suggestions, that, that's great, and teaching them how to do it as well, I, I think it's great, it's also gonna put in a lot of preventative me, uh, measures, the DVR, so Driver's Verification License that you're putting in, just make sure you check it every six months, and you're letting them know that you're doing it, and not to confuse it with the CDLs.
Right, now, I just used the CDL thing as an example, like, when they checked mine out, and I was like, "Oh, I had four days to go before my medical expired on my, on my, uh, CDL."
That's awesome, and it's safety data sheets, that's the new global harmonization. Uh, thing, also.
Yeah, I'm working with, um, Rob, he found, might have found the program with us, so it was something we could start scanning stuff in, so.
Great, just make sure you keep a list, that they always match, because if you get that one list, and the only one thing I'm gonna say about the. And the only one thing I'm gonna say about the OSHA person coming in, because I've seen it happen before. It's great to have OSHA come in and walk through, and they can help you, and they can see it. But if they do find something, you're absolutely correct. They cannot find you, but they will give you a time limit to fix it. And after said time limit, they can come in, and it will be a willful violation, which is triple the amount of the fine. Okay? So, just, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, we're gonna, um, before that takes place, we're gonna have somebody, his name is Ernie, I forgot his last name. He works with PMA, he's the OSHA instructor. He teaches everything. He came down to a few, um, he did a walkthrough with me at the community center before that surprise visit. It was like two days before. The OSHA people came down, and I think they picked up two things at the community center, because everything that, mostly everything was addressed already, so it was good. That's the person I would call in first, before I did, you know, I don't wanna open up a can of worms, but it's, we've been very diligent with everybody walking through the buildings, and really, and down at Public Works, they've been great. If they see something, they've been here. And town buildings, everybody's been, I have Charlotte at the library, who notices everything, you know, a couple people here. So, it's been really great.
I think it's great. Congratulations to you and your team.
It's important to keep proactive with growth rather than a reactive one. So, this is a nice segue into that.
And what we're gonna do, and after about two years, I'll step down as chairperson, and within, when the year to go, we'll give them a book that we've been keeping track of, if you're gonna take over, to keep rotating. I'll stay on the board, but I'll step down as the role, and let somebody else, so we keep fresh blood all the time in there.
Very good, great thinking. Good job.
Yeah, I just have a couple things. First, this all sounds great, keep up the good work, thank you. Did I hear correctly that there were sixty-two claims from the Board of Ed?
Yes.
Is it, in your estimation, that's not a lot?
Down from last.
It's down from last year. What, can you just, as I'm obviously ignorant to this, but can you explain what the majority of those are? Because that seems like a startlingly high number to me.
I only take the town ones. I'm not prepping to the Board of Ed ones.
Be careful.
Careful. I don't, I only have a number.
Yeah.
And the amount.
Okay.
I do not see anything with the Board of Ed that goes to their Safety Committee up there. And they have their own Safety Committee and all that, and they deal with that. I just get a total number.
Okay.
And that's all I do. The number I got is sixty-two claims.
And, and just, just to fill in that, even when we get the report, we don't get any detail, or who it is, anything like that. So, just tell us the type of injury that it is.
That's, that's all, that's all I'm looking for.
Oh, it's the type of incident that it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I don't, I don't care about who or exactly what happened. I just wanna know what kind of.
Games are secretive, but the type of incident.
Yeah, 'cause if, if we can't, we can't, how could you prevent anything if you don't know what kinda happened, right?
Right.
Yeah, understood.
A lot of the time, they'll go, they call record-only claims that they're issued, which means no medical treatment or something. It's just in case it could develop, either something down the road. They have a record.
Okay.
So, just because it's a sixty-two does not necessarily mean it's a recorded sixty-two, or recordable sixty-two, I'm sorry. It's just a, an incident that happened.
It could just be an incident.
Over the course of a year, you know, we have record-only claims. We have, they seek medical treatment, but they didn't do that in time, and there was no modified due. All OSHA wants to know about, or time law claims and modified due.
Hospitalization.
Thing is that, like, I was walking, I slipped, I felt strained or pinched, and they noted it. That's a claim still. But it didn't have a zero dollar to it, and no other recourse either. I mean, some of the stuff, like on accounts, like, I'm preventing, we have a bee sting, we had a, we have a couple police officers that were hurt, and, and we'll scuffle, make you an arrest.
Sure, that's, that's fine, I, I get it.
They've been, they've been pretty fortunate.
And Alex, just so you know, and I'm sure you do know this, is that if they don't seek medical attention, you do not have to call it into the Workers' Comp until they, until they go for medical attention.
That's right.
In terms of the culture over the last year, I mean, since you guys have been doing this, you know, obviously, it seems like you guys have obviously made some improvements. Have you seen any town departments that have been either resistant or more difficult to bring on board with some of these initiatives at all? Has any? Or general, I mean, I'm not asking for, you know, to call anybody out, but basically.
I would tell you, there's a problem. I mean, this year, we just started with EMS now. We just did them, and the Fire Department went to Gray Hills, we went to Gray Hill, and we went to EMS, and next month, the public will be citizens. So, we're actually spinning through the firehouses now too. I mean, that's, we did the food station already, but, you know, we did the main five first, and now we're doing the volunteer companies still. So, it's, it's working out. I mean, it was great, see, the buildings, you know, and they were actually, you know, happy to have someone there and say, hey, listen, we need another eye-wash station here. We need this, we need this, and it was, and they know it's for their own good.
Well, the safety policies and procedures in the world can, are wonderful, but you have to buy in, and that's, I mean, that's kinda where I'm going with it. I know my company's having difficulty with our own, and, you know, everybody's does, they have their own safety culture, but this particular, you know, it's good to hear, that you have that many people willing to volunteer for the board, number one, and, and number two, have all the employees buying in.
Yeah, well, the last meeting too, I told everybody, when I get back from vacation in June, I will, I don't know, we're not calling that one, are we, I mean, in May, I'm gonna hit every building.
Never tell them when you're doing it.
Oh, they don't know. They know, but they don't know what building. So far, I had a couple of the people call me, which, who are you coming first, and who are you bringing? I'm gonna go and just hit every, make my own private list, walk with a few people, and they're not gonna, we're just gonna go up there. It is what it is.
Yeah.
And we're not looking to put blame on anybody or nothing. We're just looking, making a safe work environment. That's all our goal is.
Well, I think the thing that's really helping is that the employees are all buying into it, and all working together. And that's what's making it so successful. So, they truly feel it's their program. Keeping themselves safe. So, it's just, I think, a change of mindset and attitude, the way they're doing it, and it's, the results speak for itself, which is great. So. So, any other questions for Alex?
Good job.
No? Excellent, thank you, Alex.
Awesome job, Alex.
Thank you.
So, next, I believe we're gonna have Chief Metzler at our next meeting. He tried to bully his way into this meeting. I think he sent Bob instead. But he's gonna come, because he does wanna present one more time before he retires, so. That's what he was, yeah. So, all right, with that though, we'll move on to item number ten. Discussion, take possible action regarding Memorial Day Parade Committee, which I believe Alex is the chair of. So, he will continue at the microphone. So, Alex, go ahead.
Couple quick things that we would like to talk about. John's here too with Memorial Day, so if I mess up, he can still inform you, right?
Get ready, John.
Thank you for the support, Kurt. Bob Lang has stepped down from the Christmas Parade.
Christmas Memorial Day.
Christmas.
Christmas. So.
Mr. Lang runs the Christmas Parade.
I think he's gonna get to his point.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just, hang on, it's coming.
He's circling, give him a second.
I'm coming back.
He's circling the airport.
So, I just wanna let the board know, I guess there's no really town charter, there's no really, but we're gonna like to combine both parades and to make one Parade Committee. We're gonna keep two separate treasurers, one still for Memorial Day, one still for the Christmas Parade. And Bob said he will stay on for the next, to help us through the next phase. And just wanted to let you guys know, and see if that's something I need your permission from, or do, or.
So, Ritz, since we, I think we actually appoint people to the Memorial Day Parade Committee, but I don't believe we appoint people to the Christmas Day Parade.
I don't recall that.
Committee. So, is there any issue with just making it a Parade Committee to handle both?
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't think you created it by ordinance. I don't think, I don't think it's a charter.
I believe it's in the charter.
So, it's a committee that was appointed probably by resolution. So, you could do it by, uh, sort of, or selectmen.
So, do we have to create a resolution?
No.
All right, so then I'll entertain a motion that the members of the Seymour Christmas Parade and the Seymour Memorial Day Parade Committees be merged into one committee to be called the Seymour Parade Committee going forward.
So move.
All right, motion by Karen, second by Al. Is there any discussion, any comment? Do you wanna add anything to that before we hijack it?
Was there, was there a target question?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, and we have two separate treasurers, yep.
Sure, that's a good idea.
Any?
Smart, we have enough problems getting volunteers.
Mm-hmm, I agree. Any other? And the Strategic Planning Committee will be happy because we're.
Yes, they will be. I have insight into a lot of it.
Well, wait, hold on, let's vote on this if there's no other comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes seven zero.
So, now that we're official Parade Committee.
Yep.
So, just wanna let everybody know, I'll say this loud and clear, we're seven years away from the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth.
Seven?
Yes. We're about five or six years budget-wise away, if you go with the years where it falls into. I'd like the board to start looking into putting some money away for the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth, and let the Parade, new Parade Committee start the planning of this.
I think the new Parade Committee needs to determine how much they're going to need to run such an event.
I have, I have numbers.
Myself know, and we will work on that.
All right, good. I have, you know.
Because the number we come up with probably won't be the number that you're looking for.
Well, let's, well, let's see what you were thinking, and then I'll tell you now. I mean, I would really like to see, you know, I'll have something for you at the next meeting, or something, just to have five minutes of your time at the next meeting to give you some other suggestions that we came up with, and where the money should go. I would like to see us putting away some money every year, so it's not one big, huge ask in the, you know, fifth or sixth year.
I, I guess it depends on the level you're looking for.
How huge is this ask gonna be?
Well, now, can I ask you one simple question, and then I'll go, does anybody remember the celebration we had, one-hundred-and-fifty celebration?
That was twenty-five years ago.
Does anybody remember?
Eighteen years ago. I actually do remember it.
What did you remember?
Big fireworks.
Fireworks.
There's twenty thousand. I have a number, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty close up to, but.
Twenty thousand dollars?
Fireworks? They're expensive.
Well.
It really was, I swear to God, it's the best fireworks I've ever seen in my life, that's why.
I have, you know, the ones that we use already have, gave me a price of what I'm looking for, and it was about that.
About twenty thousand?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's.
Okay, but we also have to think of, we have the fire, just going quick, the fireworks, the concert, the parade, souvenir, banners, new banners for all the streets, booklets. I wanna do something like the June of, see, you remember the fireworks. I want people to remember everything, you know. I'm tired of little things being done for big, great events.
Would this be in conjunction with Founder's Day?
It could be, well, I'll have a better for next month for you, but I wanna involve the firehouse, I wanna involve the Strand. I wanna have twenty-four days of June, leading up to it, and then have, at our June twenty-fourth meeting that year, falls on a Tuesday, have a reenactment of the day that we came in, opened the meeting, and then have another celebration that night. So, I wanna have a big twenty-four days, and have each part of the town, like the library, having a historical event. I want, you know, just do, do things right.
So, this is quite grand, and this is Seymour.
Seven years away.
So, what you need to do.
I'm glad he's starting now.
Yes, but you need to come up with a list.
I will.
And.
But I'm just saying, it's something that.
A list and a budget.
Well, I'm gonna let Tricia take this.
A list and a budget.
You need to come up with a, excuse me, sir. You need to come up with a list and have backup data for what, going to budget for each item, to see what's reasonable.
You got your.
Well, I'm just, I don't wanna.
Thankfully, we, we're, we have Seymour Police to the crowd.
No, all kidding aside, I just don't want, like, a big sticker shock. So, I'm trying to, like.
That's what I'm saying, the sooner you get it, the better.
This is super productive.
But you can't just come here with an arbitrary number or.
I didn't give you an, I, I'm not asking for an opportunity.
Hello, Danka House.
Why are we getting hot with the selectmen?
All right, hold on. Berg, please, do something with the care. Alex, listen, put together what, listen, I think everybody, I speak for everyone on this board. We love the enthusiasm, we love the idea, I think it's a fantastic idea. Put it together, at least, you know, the rough form, and then present it to us, and then we'll go from there. We have seven years to do it. I don't think you're, I don't think the numbers you're gonna present are gonna give us much sticker shock.
Oh, I, I know.
So, but get it to us, even if you get it in the next couple of months.
Okay, yeah, it's nothing, you know.
Because we, potentially, if this thing is gonna grow this big, perhaps we put together a one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary committee. a 175th anniversary committee, so, and we get people involved.
I mean, absolutely.
And we'll have volunteers from the Board of Selectmen that will join that group.
Yeah, I mean, everybody, the police chief, like Tom Amy, everybody else with all the input to help make the event a success.
I love you, Alex.
What about some lead-up events?
At least someone...
I'd like to be around or enjoy a couple.
At least someone loves you.
I'd like to be around or enjoy a couple, Alex, how about some lead-up, like next year?
Alright, I'm all time.
This is really good, how to handle an aggressive kind of presenter here, I don't think...
Can I just say?
Why not?
Oh my God, I would love to. Alex, I've gone to two of your meetings as sort of an ad hoc or a witness, because my husband's on the committee, and I so appreciate your enthusiasm and your sense of humor and your pride, most of all, your pride in this town.
Karen, I just want to...
I don't think he's joking, so I don't know about the humor.
I have to go home and listen to this.
Oh, he is.
Yes.
There's no humor.
I will acclimate.
If you can put together a month full of stuff like that, I think that'd be fantastic.
It would be.
Culminated with some big firework display and everything else, that would be great. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And the sooner you start planning, I think the better.
Yep.
Yes, but in all seriousness, seriously, you need a list with budgeted items and you have to back up to what you're presenting as a budget.
Hello, hello? No, no, shove his mic off.
Okay.
Select woman, I wasn't asking money tonight, I was just trying to get a feel of what people were thinking and something that...
Okay, thank you.
To be continued.
Come back next month with a little more of a plan, Alex, so we'll go from...
Come back in six years.
Maybe we can get some storyboards or something like that.
We're gonna have our own fireworks.
I think we need Alex on the agenda every month.
Yes.
Yes.
From now until 2025 or whatever year it is.
That's a lot, Alex.
Last time it happened was eight years ago, when him and April, when Trish and I did an April fool joke that year after the meeting, we all had a good laugh.
I'm not laughing, I'm with you, Alex. Okay, alright, well, that's good, so we're good. Thank you, Alex. Trish, you're in trouble when you get home.
No.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda.
Oh my God.
Uh, discussion and possible action regarding fire department will request to allow alcoholic beverages to be allowed for carnival on May 31st through June 2nd.
So move.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Al. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed, chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion, take possible action regarding fire department request to allow alcoholic beverages to be allowed for carnival on May 31st through June 2nd. Okay, so handed out to you tonight is a letter from, thank you gentlemen, from Citizens Engine Company Number Two, says, dear Board of Selectmen, we would like to petition the town for a waiver of ordinance 11-20, possession, consumption of alcoholic beverages in public parks, sidewalks, streets and other public ways prohibited, in conjunction with the Citizens Engine Company Number Two Carnival to be held on Thursday, May 31st through Saturday, June 2nd at Randall Field. Citizens Engine Company will carry all applicable insurances and security will be provided by the Seymour Police Department. Should you have any further questions, please contact myself. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Todd Andrews, Citizens Engine Company Carnival Chairman. Okay, so this is the letter that came in, um, we've already addressed, or started to discuss the issues we're gonna have on that Saturday night. So is everyone in agreement that Citizens Engine Company should come up with some type of solution to the problems we've already discussed?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, at this point, I'll just entertain a motion to table.
So move.
Motion by Karen, second by Al, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed, chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Rory, could you get Chief Lombardi tomorrow at some point? Rory, just give, let the record doubt, Rory, give me a thumbs up. Item number 11, discussion, take possible action regarding hiring of, excuse me, development and enforcement assistant. Um, as you know, we put together the new, um, reorganization, I should say, downstairs for the land use department, and one of the positions was a clerk's position, um, for roughly $15 an hour, and that position will be titled, the development enforcement assistant. So in your packet, you have, um, the job description that was put together, this was done by Jim Baldwin and Rory. Um, and then also, Rory, this resume that is attached, this is the person that Jim is recommending. Okay. Alright, so first, any questions on the job description itself or the role of the position? As we went through this, but I just want to make sure everybody's still comfortable and has no, no questions? No, okay. Uh, Rory, this position, um, is slated to begin when? Is it May 1st? Alright, so any, well, let me do this, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of, um, our land use administrator, Jim Baldwin's recommendation to offer employment in the development enforcement assistant position to Colleen Cochran, am I saying that right? Cochran? Um, effective May 1st, 2018, subject to all applicable background checks conducted by human resources.
So move.
Mentioned by Len, second by Trish. Under discussion, anybody have any questions? Rory, how many applicants did we get?
And what's the hiring process for this, or the interview process, rather? Rory?
So, uh, it was advertised in the newspaper, we posted it on the website, left it open for, I believe, uh, three or four weeks. Uh, at that time, we closed it, we didn't accept any more applications, none came in, but, uh, there were four, uh, Jim Baldwin reviewed them because he will be the supervisor, uh, he said, bring all four in for interviews, Jim, Jim's assistant, the code, get her title, Elise, in the building department, and I met with all four candidates, um, and then Jim made the ultimate decision, Elise and I, you know, added our two cents, but...
Okay, thank you. Again, this is $15 an hour, 15 hours a week, 19 hours a week, uh, no benefits. Okay, any other questions, comments, thoughts? Everybody's good? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Okay. Alright, next item on the agenda is item number 12, discussion, take possible action regarding health insurance proposal. Okay, as you know, we are, um, every year, we're very aggressive with our health insurance, we work very closely with the folks at Lockton, who have been very good, um, partners with the town of Seymour. Even though we had, um, what I would consider a, um, good year health insurance-wise with our loss ratios and things, Anthem started their renewal up in the 20% range, generally that is a negotiating tactic, and then they slowly come down over time, and over the last couple of years, we've been able to get them down almost near zero. Uh, this year, Anthem's best offer was an increase of 14.9%, which is extremely high. So we put our, uh, health insurance, um, business for the town and the Board of Education out to bid, uh, we've received several bids that were analyzed by Lockton, and we have come back, um, with Cigna being the best alternative for both the town of Seymour and the Board of Education. The increase for Cigna without, or including our dental, is 2.3%, which is a very good renewal. Uh, the program, um, is going to be a half step towards self-insurance, so it's not a full self-insured plan, there are some protections in place, and if the board is interested in going in-depth, we can have someone from Lockton come and present to the board if, if you'd like. Uh, but all in all, the town is going to be saving close to a million dollars off the renewal that Anthem provided. For fiscal year 18, the year that we're closing, our costs for medical and dental, combined with the Board of Education, were 7,404,951, and for fiscal year 19, for the town and the Board of Education, we are projected to be 7,578,191. So we're up about $174,000 total.
What was our budgeted amount for an increase? Did we have one?
We, both the town and the Board of Ed put in increases of 5%.
So this would come in under budget?
Yeah, well, on the town, yes, the Board of Education, no, because this is a blended rate between the two overall, our number's a little bit lower, their number's a little bit higher, but you have to look at it all.
In terms of the entire budget, it would be under budget?
Yes, yeah, the entire budget's under budget, yes, overall. So the first step in the process would be for this board, to a grin or a, correct me if I go astray here, um, that we will start the process moving forward, um, with the transition to Cigna. Uh, prior to doing that, though, I need to sit down with the four municipal unions and have a conversation with the presidents and their union representation with regards to some of the specifics of the plan, each contract is written a little bit differently, um, so we want to have those conversations with the union before we move, officially move forward. Board of Education's gonna have to do the same thing on their end. Uh, it is our understanding of the plans, the way it was explained to us by Lockton, is that the benefits will be the same or better than what the employees currently have with Anthem, which will be good, they will be running disruption reports to get an understanding of doctors that may not be in the Cigna network, that way we can make that available to the employees, we'll also be running, same thing for prescriptions, if somebody has a certain prescription drug, we want to make sure that that drug is covered in the Cigna plan and so on, so. Uh, I reached out today, just via text, to the four presidents, just to let them know, and then Rory's working on scheduling a, a meeting, actually, John's the president for the police, um, so we'll have those meetings over the next couple of days, give them the opportunity to ask any questions, I'm sure they might want to bring their insurance person as well, we'll have someone from Lockton there so they can talk at a much higher level and, and get that done. Again, one of the benefits as well to the employees is every employee pays a cost share on a percentage basis in the town of Seymour, so obviously, the lower we can keep the premium, the less the employees will have to pay as well, so again, there's some, um, savings to the employees as well. So that's kind of where we stand, the packet contains just some information, um, on the plan, so you can certainly go through it if you have, like I said, specific, um, questions, we can have, certainly have someone from Lockton come, um, and discuss it if you're interested. We had a meeting, uh, about two and a half hours, almost three hours, last week, with Lockton and Cigna going through everything on the plan, that was attended by Rory and Doug, Tony, Mike Wilson, the superintendent, Rich Beldon, Rick Beldon, excuse me, um, so it was a good, good mix of people.
In terms of the cost increase, did Anthem give us any indication as to why their number was so high versus Cigna? I mean, is there an explanation as to why they jumped up 14%?
Um...
Almost 15? I'm not, I'm not very up to date on why insurance companies do what they do, but...
Trying to think of the right way to answer this, I'm getting myself in trouble. Um, I don't think Anthem cared.
Oh, okay.
To be quite honest with you. Um, I think they're just a little cavalier in their rates, I, I know that they're hemorrhaging business across the state, so I'm sure their expenses are, the pool is not as wide as it used to be, so the renewals need to be bigger. Uh, Cigna's trying to make a big push, uh, to pick more municipal business in Connecticut, so I think they're coming in with very aggressive...
Well, I guess, the reason why I ask is, are we gonna be facing Cigna jumping up about 15 or 20% next year?
Uh, that's always the, the potential, uh, we asked for a lock-in on the second year, um, and Cigna wouldn't do that, I don't think anybody would do that, but, you know, the rates primarily are gonna be driven by, um, our loss ratio, so if we can keep our loss ratio in the 70s again, I think we'll come back with very competitive rates, we, this will be the third year in a row we've shopped our insurance, so I think Cigna will be very aware that we are not afraid to shop the business and pull the trigger and move on if they're not going to be competitive, so...
You're, and we're looking at Cigna with dental, correct?
Cigna with, yes.
And can you explain to me, I'm just, I don't know if I'm confused, but Cigna without dental is more expensive and there's still a cost near the dental, I mean, I just want to make sure the rates we're looking at are accurate.
Rory?
Yeah, there's a, a discount, it, the overall cost is probably lower if we don't go with them for dental, uh, but if we use them for both, we get a discount, so that's why the percentage is lower.
What's the cost near dental if it's Cigna without dental?
Well, I can answer that one. Um, now I understand your question, I'm sorry. If you notice, the 311, 981, that number carries through, with Anthem, we self-insure for dental.
Okay.
So that's fully self-insured, so it's the administration of the program, if we do the administration with Cigna, to Rory's point, now I understand, we get a discount on both the health insurance and the dental.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I just didn't understand your initial question. Anybody else question, comments, concerns? Alright, so we're just getting a tentative approval from the board, essentially to start the process, again, we still need to, like I said, meet with the unions, um, and then there is a ti, a very aggressive timeline that Cigna has given us to allow this to take place for, uh, July 1st, so I'm sure this is something that will be back before this board, um, probably next month at some point, so. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for tentative approval for the town of Seymour to move forward with its health insurance, care and with, for both health, excuse me, for both medical and dental, to be Cigna, pending union discussions.
So move.
Motion by Len, second by Trish. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Okay. Alright, uh, item number 13, appointments, we have the appointment list for us, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the appointment list as presented.
So move.
Motion by Len, second by Karen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Item 14, tax refunds and abatements, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's report as presented.
So move.
Motion by Len, second by Al, under discussion, just take a look, make sure there's no conflicts. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Okay. Uh, item number 15, the transfers, we actually have some transfers this evening, uh, we have two smaller ones and then two larger ones. So we're gonna start off with control number five, uh, this is being, for town buildings, this is being put forward by myself, um, the amount requested, $12,434.34, that is gonna be coming out of the oil line in town buildings, and that will be moved as follows, salary, director of operations, $6,594, salary, regular employees, $1,065, overtime, $3,800, retirement, $1,375.08, and social security, $876.61, and as you can see, under the description, uh, the transfer is due to salary increase, promotion for the director of operations, overtime for snow removal and other emergencies, and associated costs for retirement and social security. The salary, regular employees, um, we brought on a part-time custodian to help during workers' comp, uh, so that's where that increase came in, the $3,800 in overtime was for our custodians due to the amount of snow and other things that they had to do, uh, that was, came in above budgeted, and the director of operations line, that was just simply a calculation mistake on his salary. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve control number five, a transfer in the amounts of $12,434.34 as presented.
So move.
Motion by Len, second by Al, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Uh, next item is control number, it doesn't have a control number, but we're gonna call it control six, um, which is the police department, uh, the authorized person is Chief Michael Metzler, the amount requested is $42,437.10, that is coming out of fund balance, and that will be transferred to machinery and equipment, that'll be replacing car six, which will be turned over to the town, uh, though it's listed as, uh, fund balance, um, this money is coming from an abundance in the, uh, the private duty administration line, we charge $40 for every time that we do private duty, um, there's been so much private duty in the town over the last several months that that number is going to be, um, much higher than anticipated, so we're gonna have the ability to purchase a car, uh, by doing it this way, it certainly takes the pressure off the budget, uh, I think the police department budget has come in, um, very lean and responsible, uh, and by making this transfer, that's one of the things we were able to do, I would expect we will be transferring for two more cars in this current budget, we have the chairman of the Board of Police Commissioners here, Bob, I don't know if you want to add anything or if I've covered it all for you?
Just need cars.
Just need cars, okay. So, but, you know, and, and this is standard course, um, every year, if you guys recall, we usually, uh, purchase police cars, uh, in current year budget with surplus funds from the police department, so we don't have to put them in, uh, to next year's budget, so, I think it's a way to get the police officers, uh, much-needed equipment, at the same time, uh, being as respectful as we possibly can to the mill rates and taxes paid by the residents.
Are we still doing every other year, two cars and in between one?
We do, no, two, three, two, three, two, three.
Two, three, two, three.
Yeah. Uh, in fiscal year 19 is a three-car year, I mean, like I said, we believe this one and then two others will be able to purchase before the end of the year.
So, can you just explain why it's still gonna be listed as fund balance if it's not actually coming out of fund balance?
Um, I don't know why Doug has it listed that way, to be 100% honest with you. I assume it's because the revenue is above, um, what's anticipated, so it's going to fall to the bottom line, um, he will probably be taking the money from fund balance and replacing it as the money falls at the end of the year, so I think it's just an accounting wash, but...
Okay.
Um, we can certainly, I can certainly ask him and let you know.
Yep, I don't think it's a big enough amount to really move the needle, but, you know...
And again, for us, it's determining if we are okay with the transfer taking place, so the money being used to buy the equipment, the Board of Finance will then weigh into the methods of how it's, um, how the money's being spent, or where it's coming from. Everyone's good? Okay, and there is, uh, attachment data, um, so everybody can see exactly what makes up that amount.
Can I, can I ask a question of, uh, the police commissioner, chairman?
Sure.
You know, it's, Bob, if you wouldn't mind, um, this is kind of a philosophical question, I guess, maybe you could shed some light, and, uh, we have an officer here as well, maybe he could shed some light too. What is it about, I'm assuming that the vehicles being purchased are gonna be in line with the ones that we have already, the large SUVs, wh, what is it about the, like, all-black or very dark-colored, uh, vehicles that we, we keep purchasing those?
Uh, that's the color that the cruise speed car changes, well, that actually, um, the price for a black car is cheaper than the price for a white car or a different colored car, so that's why we pick the black now, because they're cheaper than, you got a white car, a red car, or a blue car, I'm asking why, and we look for the cheapest colors so that we pick the best with...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Sure. Thank you.
Good question. Okay, any other questions, comments? Everybody's good? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Let's make it two motions on the same thing. Okay, control number seven. This is put in by myself. The amount requested is two million dollars. The money will be moved from fund balance to our internal service fund reserve. Well, I'll talk about it. So I'll entertain a motion to approve control item number seven in the amount of two million dollars.
Move.
Motion by Len, second by Al. Under discussion, we've had the conversation before, we're going to change the classifications of the unencumbered cash reserves that we keep on hand. We're not going to have as much money in fund balance, but we're going to move, and you'll see on our next one as well. The internal service fund reserve is what we use to cover our workers' comp and our health insurance funds. So by adding additional money into this fund, number one, it leads us along the path of going self-insured because we start to build up a reserve that we will have. Even though it's in the internal service fund, it is still considered unencumbered cash reserve, so I can honestly answer the question when S and P asks where we stand. The state of Connecticut, again, as we've talked about, just asks for fund balance, so we'll be able to honestly give them a number that is lower. And since fund balance is one of the things that the state of Connecticut uses to determine how much municipal aid they're going to cut, I think it's in our best interest at this point to have less money in fund balance. So. Any other questions or comments on that?
Yes, strategic planning is still waiting for help rewriting the verbiage on the funds that we're holding.
I will reach out to the chairman of the board of finance.
Thank you.
This was all signed off by our auditors, as well as bankers.
Does putting the money in this fund make it, make it easier to access, or make it more likely that we will spend it than if it were called fund balance?
No, same process to move it, or to use it.
Right, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, if people will think of this in a different way. I mean, I know we can't necessarily speak for everyone's mindset.
In what way, though, I guess?
Will there be less aversion maybe by the board of finance to say, okay, this is a different fund than fund balance? We don't, because there's a stigma attached to spending fund balance, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think everyone can agree that.
Yep.
Do you see any potential, in a long-term sense, of this being seen as less of a stigma to spend this money?
I think it'll be, I think it'll be less likely spent out of this than fund balance.
Okay.
Because, to be honest, I don't think people will understand it as, fund balance is pretty simple. It's just the extra cash that we have. It's a savings account.
Yeah.
I think people are less likely to understand what the internal service fund is, reserve.
Okay.
So I think they'll be less likely to look there.
Kurt, you said this is moving towards having money put aside for being self-insured.
Mm-hmm.
Insured.
Mm-hmm.
So it really can't be touched. Does that go in line with the presentations we were given before by, I can't remember the name of the group, towards what the
Okay.
Agencies were looking for going self-insured? I don't remember, I don't remember who came to see us and did the presentation.
I'm not sure which one you saw.
A year ago.
Was it Millman that you saw?
And how much money we should be putting aside each year.
That's probably for OPEB. I would, I would guess that would be Millman. No, this is different than that.
This is different.
Yeah.
But still applies. How does it apply if it's touchable? That's what I want to know.
Um, how would it apply? This is money that could be transferred, when people set up, when people go self-insured, a lot of times, they will move money from fund balance into an account to have a reserve set up in advance, and they will not take the discounts on the premiums in the first couple of years. They'll keep paying what they had been paying to build up money in that reserve account, and then they'll eventually take the reserves. Ansonia, as an example, had that huge fund balance. They wanted to self-insure, they could have just moved the full amount out of their fund balance right in there. Most towns don't have the ability to do that. So by us moving this money in, it kind of starts that process, and as we build up reserves, we'll get there a little bit quicker. That makes sense?
Yes, but you said you could touch it for other purposes.
This is
That's what I was trying to understand.
This money can still be, because we don't have that, we're not there yet, is what I'm saying.
In an emergency, we can grab it.
In an emergency, we grab, it's the same process. There'll be a vote of the board, select from board of finance to move the money out. There's no difference. So. It's still considered unencumbered cash reserve.
Okay.
And this was not my idea. I don't mean that in a bad way. This was chairman of the board of finance and the auditor that came up with this solution, based on what we were trying to accomplish. So, which was to move the money out of fund balance, but to keep the money as unencumbered cash reserve.
I don't think having it open for other expenditures is the way to build up a fund for self-insured. That was the whole point of the presentations we received, to make sure they were not touchable.
But we're not there yet.
I think this kills three birds with one stone.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
In this particular case. Ideally, as long as there's no emergency situation, and we don't have to touch the money, then at some point, we have something to build on.
Right.
But at that, but if something ever, it were to happen, if the state of Connecticut were to say, cut all of our municipal funding, all eight million or whatever we have left, we have something left to try to work with, if we need it. Ideally, that doesn't happen.
Trish, I think you're getting hung up on the OPEB presentation, which is totally separate
Yes.
From what Kurt is talking about. And I share your concern. I think we should be contributing a good amount to OPEB, but it's a totally different discussion.
There is money in this current, well, nineteenth budget.
Because you did say it would be used toward that, but I guess that's barring, it's not used for an emergency.
This would be if we go a hundred percent self-insured. You have to have cash reserves available to that.
Self-insured and OPEB are different.
They're two different things.
Self-insured would be for the current insurances. OPEB is for legacy, if I'm not.
And we're not self, we're not fully self-insured yet on health insurance. We've taken a step there, but we're not fully there.
Okay.
But there is the ability to, depending on how our claims go, that we can build up some cash reserve, and the plan is to take that and just sweep that into an account that will be geared just for that. But if we were to switch tomorrow to self-insured, if that made sense, we probably would be taking money from this account and moving it there, just like we would be taking it from fund balance.
Okay.
And moving it there.
And you have to stop and explain it.
Yeah. We have either fifty or a hundred thousand going into OPEB this year. I can't remember off the top of my
It's in the, it's in the capital plan that he gave us before.
Okay.
Because I agree, we do have to start putting money away for OPEB now. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Okay, next item on the agenda, or, I'm sorry. We have one more transfer before, is control number eight. Again, this is authorized person is myself, and the amount of two million dollars from fund balance going to our capital debt reserve fund. So I'll entertain a motion to approve control item number eight.
Move.
Motion by Len, second by Al. Under discussion, it's the same thing. The capital debt reserve fund, we will be placing this money. The money in this account will be used to pay capital and debt. So the money that, theoretically, the money that is budgeted now, in the, in the current budget for debt will fall to the bottom line and will reappear each year. So there's no change. So it's just a place to park the money. Debt service payments will be made out of the debt reserve fund. So again, it's just an accounting procedure. But again, it takes money out of fund balance for the time being, so when the state of Connecticut asks, and I'm sure the question's going to be coming, where we are standing for fund balance, instead of saying a little over seven million now, we'll say a little over three million. So we'll drop dramatically.
So is this, is this something that you see us doing every year, these kind of transfers, as we, you know, hopefully, we continue to run surpluses and we have more money in fund balance? Will we continually transfer them in, or will we, to keep our fund balance level, or will we allow the fund balance to naturally build up, or down, I guess?
This one, the, the capital debt reserve fund, I anticipate we'll be doing every year, because this will be depleted, and then at the end of the year, we'll have a two million dollar surplus in our debt service payment line. So we'll just sweep it in and just keep doing the same thing.
Is there, now, I think I know the answer to this, but is there any possibility that somebody in the future would not be savvy enough to do that?
Um.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure it continues.
Well, what, well, what would happen is, if somebody decided not to do it, the money would just fall to the bottom line and fall back into fund balance.
Alright, okay.
Now, what will happen in this?
Unless somebody thinks, oh, now we have a lot of extra money, why don't we drop the, the rate?
Well, no, they couldn't, because our debt payments are scheduled. I guess if they wanted to use fund balance to pay for reoccurring expenses, they can do that anyway.
Right. So my question is, it's still the same mechanism?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, who knows what's going to happen? We could see a very different process in the state of Connecticut next January. It just depends on who wins the election and, you know, how OPM at that point decides to ask the question, or how OPM decides that they want to address municipal aid.
Okay.
So, this doesn't, this is, where the other one, we actually have to make a motion to move the money out. This one would be a reoccurring thing every year, because this, this two million dollars will be depleted, and then we will have a surplus in the line at the end of the budget year. It'll go, fall to fund balance, we'll have to move it back into the debt reserve fund. Okay.
Oh, let me make sure, I'm hearing this properly. So this may not be a static type of process, depending on what happens up in Hartford
Correct.
Over the next year or so.
Right.
We're going to have to have this mechanism in place.
Correct.
This is for the time being, and what we're dealing with right now.
It's a matter of the question S and P asks versus the question that the state of Connecticut asks.
When is that question usually asked by OPM? Is it every single budget deficit lately?
They, they asked in, was it September this year?
So, and it was specifically about fund balance. It was not about unencumbered cash reserves.
Fund balance. How much you have in fund balance.
Let's hope none of them are watching our meeting.
Well, the thing is, nobody, half the towns didn't even answer, so they just went to the audits, and the audit has in there with fund balances, and that's the number that they use. So.
But Stefan.
Right.
It's coming.
Yeah. Like I said, there, there'll be a new commissioner of OPM come January, so it'll be whoever that person is, how they choose to look at this.
And anyone coming forward who might not have the same mindset, at least if we get something in the strategic plan that directs what those funds are for and how to manage that. They could use that as a guideline, hopefully.
Definitely for the internal service fund. Yes. For this, if, like I said, this money will be spent, the count will be zero, and the boards that follow us choose not to reload it, that's, that's their purview.
So currently, just want to be clear, do we use fund balance to pay off the expenses that are paid with this account right now?
No, we have a line in the budget.
So that line is going to go away?
There's a principal, there's, no, that line will stay. We won't use it to pay the debt.
Oh, okay.
We'll pay the debt out of this fund.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have a surplus in the principal and interest line of two million dollars.
Okay.
So at the end of the fiscal year, that'll be sitting there. At that point, it'll either fall back into fund balance on its own, or we can sweep it back into the debt service fund.
Okay.
Do it each year.
Now, now I'm totally clear. Thank you.
Pretty good? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Oh, actually, if you look at the back of this stapled section, I just noticed it when I flipped over. Again, there's our debt and how it's going to move over the next, until 2042, until back when Alex is planning his party. Two hundred coming. When is the seventy-fifth, one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary? What year?
Twenty twenty-five.
If you notice, there's a substantial drop in fund balance, or, excuse me, in debt service in 2025.
It's a celebration right there.
So you're covered. Based on these, there's about a six hundred thousand dollar drop, so can you get it done for six hundred grand? But this, it'll, this is the amount that we budget.
Yeah.
So that'll be there every year, and as that moves. So that number would change if we didn't change anything. Okay. Alright. That closes transfers. Item number sixteen, correspondence, only piece of correspondence we have is the check register. And with that, we go to public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment? We'll close public comment, and we'll move to selectmen's public comment. Mr. Boodyak.
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Sure.
Imagine my surprise when I woke up last week and watching Channel Three News. I learned that they have a feature called Twenty Towns in Twenty Days, and what they're doing is
Bless you.
They are having the viewers vote, they, they offer two towns, two cities, and they have viewers vote as to what town should receive attention from Channel Three reporters. And my, my surprise, because mostly, I, I expected they would mostly be featuring towns in the Hartford area, I was quite surprised to see that Seymour was posed against Ansonia. And even though we can't beat them in football, the next morning, they reported that Seymour won.
We have better IT people than they do. I'll just leave it at that.
We got the vote out.
The vote, the vote, you know, Seymour won. Now, the presentation, they're sending a reporter in May, well, they're, they're going to make the presentation in May. I don't know when the reporter's coming, obviously. I don't have it in at Channel Three.
Hopefully, they'll let us know.
But, you know, and I spoke with Alex about this the other night at the Memorial Day Parade Committee, and I've, I've decided that this is something we really need to pay attention to. This is really good PR for the town of Seymour. Channel Three, I think, is the most popular TV station in, in this state, and I, I put together a brief list of places that we might want to highlight in the town. The Broad Street Park, the Fish Bypass, the Greenway Trail, French Memorial Park, the New Middle School, the High School, Antiques on Main Street, the Historical Society, perhaps some baseball fields. And I, I think this is something that the, that the first selectman should really take a hold of and make sure that somebody is paying attention to what it is we're going to highlight here in the town. It, it can only be good for the town.
I believe voting is still going on, if I'm not mistaken.
No, we won.
No, 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 but we won, we're one of twenty.
Yes, we are one of twenty, but they're, they're sending a reporter here.
But what I'm saying is, I'm sure they're going to go through and determine the twenty towns first, and then reach out and do that, because we've gotten no communication from Channel Three at all. So, but once we are aware of that, then yeah, we'll definitely be very active and be a part of it. I would expect Channel Three just would not randomly show up without giving notice.
Well, I would hope not, but I'm, I'm saying that, you know, every day on the news, they're, you know, they put towns Winchester against, and, you know, and, and Seymour won. So they are sending a reporter. I can't remember the person's name.
I'm aware of that. I'm just saying, they haven't reached out to us yet. I think the voting is still going on for the other nineteen towns.
Oh, the other towns. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because they didn't even really let us know that the vote was taking place. We kind of found out randomly.
Yes, I told Alex.
Thankfully, we found out in the morning of the day, and we were able to push it out and get it on on social media and push it to the different groups and get the vote going. So.
Please don't let Alex think he's the reason that Seymour won.
No, no.
It'll just, yeah, okay.
No, I asked Alex to relay the message to Kurt.
And he did. He told me about your conversation about winning, yes.
Yes.
People heard about 2025, and they couldn't vote best on us.
Chief Board button, we're punished.
Ah, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Karen, please continue, as much as I'm enjoying Alex getting beaten up a little bit.
No, I'm good. That's, that's what I'm-
Yeah, no, we'll definitely make sure the selectmen are aware once we hear what's going to happen. So if people want to be a part of whatever it is that they choose to do, we'll take your suggestions into mine.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And I'm glad you've embraced the Greenway Trail as a highlight for the town.
Oh, I didn't say I embraced it. I still call it a sidewalk.
But it's notable to be, so I appreciate that, Karen.
Okay.
I mean that in a good way, not in a, not in a smart way. Okay, Len?
Yeah, I missed last week's, or two weeks ago, I missed the meeting, so I just wanted to take a quick second to thank the guys and the ladies up at Great Hill for putting on a great Easter egg hunt. I know my two kids absolutely loved it. My littlest one got one of those big chocolate bunnies, so she was thrilled, but she didn't eat the whole thing, because it was probably as big as her, but-
Because you ate it.
Yeah, because daddy ate it, but, but it was great. So, you know, that was, you know, kudos to them. They do a great job every year. And I also wanted to mention, you know, I've been taking on a heck of a lot more responsibility at work over the last few months, and so I'm going to, unfortunately, I'm going to be stepping down as deputy first selectman after this meeting. I'll put something in writing, Kurt, but I just wanted to thank you guys for, you know, putting your trust in me over the last year. You know, I tried to fulfill the job as best as I could, and unfortunately, you know, work is getting crazier and crazier for me every year, which is a good thing, but unfortunately, it gives me less time, so I just wanted to make that mention.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your service in the position. It's certainly been helpful to me. So for our next meeting, then, I will put forward a name for appointment to fill the position. So. Thanks, pal. All right, Al. Wow, all right. Yeah, I'm surprised I didn't write shocking in my notes. So, Emery?
Just want to give a big thank you to the first responders, our fire departments, police departments, emergency response, ambulance, for that huge fire that took place on Saturday, as well as the surrounding fire departments that came in and helped, and the other fire departments that covered the towns, for those towns responding here. It was, it was such a shocker, and when you drive by and you see the building, it's just hard to still imagine those families are without and just total destruction. And I hope that everybody's able to help those families in need. I know there's a couple of things on the Seymour webpage about helping and donations. I know Red Cross was helping those families with shelters, right?
Yeah, actually, Rory set up some meetings, I believe, for tomorrow. Why don't we? Okay. We're going to meet with Team The United Way and the Red Cross, just to get an understanding. You know, there are groups out there on social media that are pushing to collect, you know, whether it be clothes and, you know, other things that are needed by these folks, and they're looking for a place to store them. And we've certainly talked about, you know, Town Hall and the community centers being a place to do that. But until we find places for these folks to go, you know, we can't accumulate too much stuff, because we can't give it to them, because they're not going to have any place to put it.
Right.
So, you know, the owner of the building has had a lot of conversation with Jim Baldwin, his insurance company is involved, so I'm going to expect that his insurance is going to take care of housing the people at some point. But the Red Cross has stepped in to at least help out for the time being, and as I said, Team and The United Way are kind of on standby to jump in if they need to, so. But, I mean, to you, we had Oxford, Beacon Falls, Ansonia, Derby, Shelton, Whittaker.
South Ferry.
South Ferry. All here. We had three ladder trucks actually going at one time. So it was good. Great teamwork. The only one injury out of all, which was one of our fire chiefs who just, who was running and just tripped. Ankle's not broken, I talked to him again last night.
Oh, yeah.
Just a very bad high ankle sprain.
Oh, that's good.
So he's in a walking boot, and expects to be off the crutches in a couple of days and hopefully back. Is he walking? Okay, so.
See, safety first.
And that's the thing, he said that he yells at the guys in training not to run. Take your time, get there. And of course, he was running to get there. I don't know if you saw the picture, he was sitting on a Seymour ambulance stretcher with his leg up as they were working on it, talking on his radio, because he was still in command of the fire, because the other chiefs hadn't gotten there yet. So he actually turned command over to Chief Pelletier from Oxford temporarily until Chief Rochelle got there, and then he took over. So. But it was a great teamwork of the towns, all coming together and working as one, so.
Yes.
And thankfully, that was the only injury.
Yes.
Which is good.
Great mutual aid by all. Also, Public Works, we had our Public Works meeting last Monday, and just to hear Tony give the report of how much trash they're picking up throughout the town.
Yes.
And I can't say enough, every morning I see a new street being swept with the sweeper. We see the sweeper is out. All the hard work with the snow and the rainstorms. And Karen, they are addressing the Holbrook Road.
Yes, I saw them.
They are working with Oxford on that, because part of that is Oxford as well, so-
Yeah, I saw them today.
Oh, just on Holbrook, just so you know, as I thought, Rory and I will be at a meeting tomorrow with the COG to talk to the third-party reviewer on Holbrook to see where we stand. And then we'll be able to give a better update on a timeline for when that'll go out to bid and ultimately when that work would start. It's still projected to go out to bid before the summer, and work is projected to start this year. It will be a two-season project, so it will start in '18 and finish in '19. This is the plan, very similar to Rimmun.
That's good to hear.
So, again, unless we get bad news tomorrow, which we don't expect.
I'm just a thank you to Len for doing a great job as a deputy first selectman, pretty much doing what Kurt's not here.
Is that why I'm fighting my DUI claim in California?
Exactly. And just, yeah, and just don't forget, April 26th, get out and vote. You put that out, you put that out on Facebook today, with town meeting, town meeting.
Come to the town meeting.
That's right.
You did make it seem like you have to get out and vote on April 26th.
You did. That's why I was like-
And if you, if you clearly look at the post.
No, no, Stefan, it didn't say vote. It did.
Said make sure you get out and vote April 26th.
That's, hold on, bear with me one second. I'm going to go right to the post itself.
Reception is everything, my dear. You got two selectmen telling you they misunderstood.
Because I thought it was a town meeting.
Please make sure you get out to vote on Thursday, May 10, from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the Seymour Community Center. I'm not sure how much clearer those words can be. I gotta be honest.
Those are pretty clear.
Now, I will say, in the article, the headline, the title of the article, Seymour residents to vote on budgets April 26th.
Oh, I read, okay.
You may want to take that up with the New Haven Register, Gene Falbo-Saznovich.
I couldn't imagine Gene making a mistake, so that's why I blame you. I'm sorry.
Well, that's, I guess-
Well, then I apologize.
It's not like I don't have a history.
But we do have a town meeting on April 26th.
We do have a town meeting at 6 o'clock here in the Norma Drummer Room.
Tell everybody that's when they vote, and maybe we'll get 11 people to that meeting.
We might.
That would be a record. I don't think we've gotten 11 people in the last six years. Remember good old days, Bob, when you actually voted in those meetings and you would get 200 or 300 people and-
[inaudible].
Yeah.
I was just about to say that.
Unless we're voting, we have fire trucks or Public Works.
Exactly, yeah. Get everybody there. So.
That's all I have.
That's all. Thank you, Emery.
And I apologize.
Well, you do apologize. It's, I can see where the confusion came in. We'll bring that up to Gene.
The day after the fire, fire department still held their, one of their annual breakfasts.
Breakfast, yeah.
So, I mean, nice job, a lot of tired men. It's always a good time. So thank you to them. And that's all I have.
I have one more thing.
Emery?
Happy belated birthday to Stefan. Yesterday was his birthday.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And happy birthday to Karen on Thursday.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, as is the tradition, that goes back before Bob the first time, and Bob will, Bob will vouch for this.
Does he have the [inaudible]?
The person to the right of the person who had the birthday needs to sing happy birthday. So, Karen, you are the person to the right. If you would please stand up and lead, and just sing happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Move the camera, Rory.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Stefan. Happy birthday to you.
There we go.
Well done, well done.
That was touching, the greatest gift of all.
The tradition continues, Bob. See? Len, I'm not sure what you're smiling about, because you're to the right of Karen. So, with that, Rory, is there anything we've missed that you're aware of? That's your knowledge. Rich?
Leona?
I make a motion, second.
I have a motion by Emery, second by Karen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0.
I'm going to like a recording.
All right, get closed at 9:01.